I call the regular session of mayor and council of the city of Bisbee, county of Cochise, and state of Arizona. The day of Tuesday, December 4, 2018, at 7:00 PM for the Cochise County Board of Supervisors, hearing of 14, 15 Melvin H. G. Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Williams, please call the board.
Councilmember Anna Klein, Councilmember Joan Hansen, Councilmember Frank Davis, Mayor David M. Smith, Councilmember Bill Higgins, Mayor Pro Tem Dunn, Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom, Robert Smith, city manager, Niner Williams, deputy city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Daniel Duchon, personnel director, Dwayne Wallace, operations manager, Albert Uchave, police chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence tonight, I'd like us to reflect and remember a couple of things. We've had an incredible earthquake this week. We've had more fires, a continuation of fires. And right here at home, please keep Ashley Corrada's father in your thoughts. He's in a Tucson hospital with a series of strokes. So if you would have a moment of silence with me. Thank you. Please stand and join in the collective reading.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Good night tonight. I have one announcement. The cemetery community has done a fantastic job. And the wreaths across America is coming to Bisbee. And what this means is that we have about 900, I'm told, veterans buried in our two cemeteries. And wreaths across America were started back east. And it's a situation in which wreaths are actually purchased and blessed on the graves of the service people. And so with that, they are looking for volunteers, which would be at 9:30 AM on December 15th, that's Saturday. And to help place those, like I said, there's 900, and I think, the last I knew, that they were able to get about 330 or 340, which is incredible for the first year. It's really good news. Grace Wiggins with the committee is the one that headed it up and has done a great job as has the whole committee. So thank you on behalf of us, to the committee, and again, maybe use some volunteers. Thank you. So we have... We have a call to the public who listened here, but I'm going to take call to the public. And we have Nancy Perry. Welcome, Miss Perry. Nancy? There you are. Ma'am, if you could come right up here. And there's a light system. When you have three minutes, and so when the red light goes off, you're done.
Nancy Perry, and I appreciate being able to come to the council. I bought a house at Cochise Row, 25 Cochise Row, about three years ago. And with my neighbors, we all made improvements. And we began to change the culture at Cochise Row. Not the road itself, but the neighborhood. We all put some money, but mostly split equity into these houses. And from those efforts, we increased our property values. So the neighborhood is... It's really come up. They redid the Little League Field. And the beer distributors are fantastic. They actually fill some potholes. And we've really started to make some progress. And I'm speaking tonight about two property owners who have maintained tried and true mindsets held over from old Bisbee. One does know the chance, one has opportunity. 23 Cochise Row has been neglected and abandoned. And they left the garbage in the front yard and all in the backyard. I built a fence in the backyard, so I didn't have to see it. The other is number 2 Cochise Row. And that is owned by a man who owns a secondhand shop near to you on Arizona Street. And he uses that property for storage on his residential land for commercial purposes. So he doesn't have enough room, so there are a lot of vehicles on there. There is a full-size RV, a school bus, four utility trailers, and a bunch of old cars. So I've been trying to clean it up. And I talked first with Joe Ward. He submitted paperwork, and that never went through. And then I called the mayor. Then he came to my house. And we looked at it, and he saw the garbage, and he saw the place that'd be in the road. And he said he would contact people, which he did, but nothing has happened. And then I went and went to mention, you know, this might be a health unit, it might be a fire issue. So I went to the fire department. And they said their jurisdiction doesn't go past commercial. But they would maybe do a knock on the door and do a drive-by. So I've had a lot of help. Everyone that I've been to has been really helpful. And I know there are legal problems in Bisbee and just garbage. But I would just like to ask the council if they would help me. I may be missing something, but it seems like you fill out a form, you put a stamp on it, you mail it, and they have a timeline to comply or not. So I'd like to see the action. I'd like to be appraised and see the timeline and what the results are. And I don't know. Thank you so much for having a place where you can come in and, you know, be a good concierge. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Oh, I need a copy of the ordinances that apply to these restrictions.
City clerk.
I mean, as they say, you've got them on more than we had on Capone. You can get them on any number of violations.
Charles Chennessy. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. I want to hear a complaint about the street avenue. I live on the Crosses Avenue. And my wife just got her new license again. I got my license. They can't pull up avenue. They only put street on our licenses. And this is a problem with my mail, or not my mail, but UPS and all the other places that send stuff to me. They end up on the street because they don't have avenue. It doesn't come up in their computers. And, you know, I think we need to... I've lost stuff. People sent things back. People stole stuff off the truck, off the house that was there, but we never see it. They dropped stuff there. And I need to get some of that. This has been happening ever since I've been here. But we have nothing. But, you know, the DMV, I call it DMV, or MDD, they don't recognize avenue either. Something's wrong.
Right, sir. Thank you. I'll discuss with staff down at the post office and then we'll...
I called the postmaster in general in Washington. And they said it has to do with you guys redoing something. But the city is the one that has to get this fixed. But the post office doesn't have anything to do with it.
We'll check that out soon, ma'am. Ma'am, who's called? We've called here, which is on the 234. And I will talk to general business. As a general business, we have a council meeting. We have a motion, and we have a second. Do we have questions? Yes, ma'am?
On page 2, there it is. And I guess I just need a reminder. What is basic?
Which department is that?
We've got, it's under administration of general government. And it's for HRA monthly admin.
Thank you, Mr. Duchon. Personnel director has the answer.
Ma'am, that's the administrator for the health reimbursement account. It's part of the health insurance package for all employees. And it's based on the number of employees that there are. It's a couple dollars per employee. So it's usually around $250.
And then on page 5, on Arizona Water Hill, there is... Well, I'm wondering why Dresden Park Restrooms have $582.66.
Well, I do know they were vandalized, and that may have something to do with it.
So is it because of...
At the week, so, Mr. Wallace has that answer. We'll know if he'd like to go on about it.
I believe it's a combination of some of the vandalism and also some issues with the backhoe preventer there. Sometimes when those things spring a leak and happen overnight, no one will know about it until the next day. I'm just gonna prepare.
Okay, so, well, really? Then on West Vista and Hudson, 62776.
Yes, also. There's, we've had a few issues with our backhoe preventers. And I don't, I can't for 100% certain say that it is vandalism. But I tested it myself earlier in the year. There weren't any issues with it. And it's kind of strange for it to happen, all of a sudden have issues.
Okay, so is that the same with Arizona Street and Cola Avenue? Because it says for irrigation, but it's only a very small...
Yeah, Arizona Cola Avenue is actually the irrigation stopping, starting from the top and goes all the way down. That's just, that's where the backhoe preventer is. And if there was a leak or something on the way, there's, and there's also, I suspect there's been legal planning being done that I have to catch to think somebody is trying to terraform our driveway. I have to kind of prompt them about that as well.
So this is something that you're...
Yeah, 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 I am.
Okay, and then...
Yes.
On page 7, the WWF channel repair?
Yes. No, that is, that is the first part of the assessment. Because if you remember, councilor, he was a preliminary engineer. That is half that payment. We've got to actually get a backhoe in the ditch for the second... Yeah. Raoul says he can do it, so I believe he can do it. We have to, we have to actually do a little bit more inspection alongside the wall, and then we'll have a plan. This is still the engineer, unfortunately. Yep?
Anything else, Ms. Perry? Anybody? Good, we have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, sit down, just give me an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 3. Approval of the consent agenda. There's items A through 1000. That's A, approval of the minutes of a special session of mayor and council held on October 13, 2018, at 6:00 PM. Approval of the resignation of Fred Miller from the Ibisbee Committee. C, approval of the resignation of Claire Shavie from the Committee on Disability Issues. D, approval of the resignation of Leslie Johns from the Committee on Disability Issues. E, approval of the resignation of Joey Giacominio from the Civil Service Commission Committee. F, approval of the appointment of Stephanie Peavy to the Ibisbee Committee. Council, is there any item that you wish for further discussion? Hearing done, I accept a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda, items A through 1000.
Thank you. Thank you. We have motion, and we have a second. Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Unhold business. Discussion of possible approval of ordinance 01812, amending the city code, Article 2.7, youth council, section 2.7.2, membership, and providing for appeal and severability. Ms. Hanson, this is the second reading. And we discussed this last time this evening. Did you have... The council, do we have any questions regarding this issue? Hearing done, do we have a motion? Well, I won't.
I move to approve the ordinance 0-1812, amending the city code, Article 2.7, youth council, 2.17, membership, providing for appeal and severability.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number 4. Discussion of possible approval of ordinance 01813, providing for use of handheld mobile devices or portable electronic devices, by adding Article 9.8, distracted driving to the city code. Chief, a challenge?
Thank you, mayor and council members of the public. This is the second reading for 0-1813. The distracted driver ordinance, which we discussed last meeting. As I spoke then, we don't have any specific statistics to show how many accidents within city limits are caused by distracted driving. But as Chief Castillo and I talked about last, the last meeting, we continue, saying during our careers, there's, it does happen a number of times. And if we can do this to help educate the public and stop them from doing that, there's so many distractions and vehicles today. Our phones doesn't need to be one of them. There is a slight change on this from, or a correction that was made from last week. On our section 9.8.3 exemptions, it says D, law enforcement. Originally it said law enforcement. That was changed to say law enforcement or emergency personnel. There are a lot of people that work with us as emergency responders who would fall under that. The other thing that I want to, to give a little bit of concern to a lot of members of the public, and a lot of our support staff, like RACs and our ham operators, those ham devices are not considered, they don't meet this definition. So we're not looking to stop the truck driver from talking on a CB radio or the ham, our local RACs guys talking on their equipment. This is tablets, cell phones, communication devices.
Thank you, sir. Questions, answers?
How does that work when you get a phone call and the officer said, "I saw you over a device", and they'll say, "No, I wasn't on it"? How does it work?
Well, at that point, if the officer witnesses somebody violating that, then yes, they can make a traffic stop based on that, and citation would be issued. If, it is, at that point, the discretion of the officer who is stopping the vehicle. It's their discretion whether they want to issue a verbal warning, a written warning, or a citation. If the officer chooses that to write citation, then just like with any other moving violation, speeding or failing to stop on a stop sign, the defendant has the opportunity to present their case in court, and then the judge will make a decision based on that.
Any other questions? Hearing done, do we have a motion?
I move to approve of ordinance 0-1813, providing for use of handheld mobile telephones or portable electronic devices by amending chapter 9, health preservation, and adding Article 9.8, distracted driving to the city code.
I second.
Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hansen?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Chief, thank you. The traffic saved, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Chief is off to meet the Douglas chief, and they're off to Boston to attend the Parry conference, which is under the anti-opioid initiative. We have operating in Dutchland. And the travel was donated by the Copper Creek Hospital. So thank you to the hospital. So we have new business. Changes about going in and coming to council. We have a judge going into the telephone booth and thumbing out... As... And there, as if by magic. By the way, I didn't get a chance to say hello to everybody. Thank you for having me. Thank you, I appreciate you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, I will start them in here. What I will do this in the order, I'm supposed to do this down here. And in the order of the mayor first, and then the council members in numerical order of the precinct they represent. And would you please raise your right hand?
No.
And repeat after me. I, David M. Smith.
I, David M. Smith.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of mayor of city of Bisbee.
Of mayor of city of Bisbee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Or so I do affirm.
Or so I do affirm.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome back to this.
Thank you.
Okay, now, by the way, can I borrow a pen from somebody at the...
I can probably get a picture of it, and just...
Oh, well. Mr. Mayor, when you come here this morning, I wasn't here. On that line, I was sitting here. I'll pass the motion. And... I'm very direct to what you're... Oh, okay. Leslie Jones. Would you please raise your right hand? And repeat after me. I, Leslie Jones.
I, Leslie Jones.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Ward 1 councilman.
Of Ward 1 councilmember.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God, or so I do affirm.
So I do affirm.
Congratulations. And welcome back. And now, Joni Giacominos, excuse me. And that's right. Raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Joni Giacominos.
I, Joni Giacominos.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office of Ward 2 councilmember.
The duty to the office, to...
Councilmember. I gave you a long line. According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God, or so do I, or so I do affirm.
So help me God.
Congratulations. And would Hannah Klein, she'll stand up. Thank you. Hannah, please raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I, Hannah Klein, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of Ward 3 councilmember according to the best of my ability. So help me God, or so I do affirm. Congratulations. Oh, yes, sorry. My...
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, thank you, Jeff. Thank you. I wanted to make a presentation to Councilman Dunn, who has been Mayor Pro Tem for the last two years, and delighted in knowing, I appreciated your help and your support, and the city appreciated everything that both of you have done. Mr. Davis, likewise, Mr. Dunn, you were in office for just shy of six years, and Mr. Davis, you were in place for two years. And so, both of you, we owe a great deal of our gratitude to you for the services you've given to the city. And so I do have plaques, they both say the same thing. I'm surprised. In appreciation and recognition for your loyal service to the citizens of the City of Bisbee, and as councilmen for Ward Two with the dates, and for Ward One with the dates, so I'd like to hand these to you. Mr. Davis, being for Ward One, you go first.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, sir, for everything. We appreciate, and will be counting on you for committees and commissions. So don't be a stranger. Thanks.
Ms. Johns, congratulations. Ms. Giacominos, congratulations. Such nice firm hands. So, would the new council people like to take literally about two minutes and introduce yourselves to the people, for those that don't know you, as a real brief background about what you do, and we'll start with Ward Two.
My name is Joni Giacominos. I've been an educator for the past five years. I currently teach in Douglas, I teach chemistry, introductory chemistry. I've lived in Bisbee ever since 1960 when I was born. I'm a third generation Bisbee person. I'm also involved in other outside sources. I'm involved with LEAP. I also work for the City of Douglas, I try to make clothes. And.
Thank you. Ms. Johns? Make sure your mic is.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Leslie Johns. I was born and raised in Bisbee. I graduated from Bisbee High School in 1997. I lived away for about seventeen years, but moved home about four years ago. I currently work for Cochise County, and I'm happy to be here and loving you.
Thank you. And Ms. Klein? Could you speak into your mic?
I'm Hannah Klein, born and raised in Bisbee. I worked for the Bisbee in the high school district for twenty-seven years now, and I'm just happy to still be serving.
As we are, thank you. Item number six is notice that as mayor, I will be appointing Hannah Klein as Mayor Pro Tem. And this, these appointments may change, we don't really know yet. There are some people that would like to see the Mayor Pro Tem rotated, and that's something that we'll, Ms. Klein and I'll certainly discuss in the future. Number seven is notice of council appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. That has been included in the packet, and is posted on the website, so instead of me taking the time to read it, it's present. And item number eight is public hearing and discussion of possible approval of this attempt to adopt ordinance O-18-14 to conditionally rezone APN 103-61-348 owned by Douglas and Donat Gatten from R1 CM1. Mr. Sparsa, Landon Madden, you're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Mayor and council, before you tonight is a rezoning application that was forwarded by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the Public Care Network November fifteenth, and it forward a recommendation. But let me walk you through, here is an aerial photo, you can see here is the subject parcel, there's the High Desert Cafe and Market, and it's next door, right here, Iron Man statue's there, so again, you're quite familiar with the location, it was previously restauranted, and I think most recently a bakery. So, in evaluating this, the request is, it's currently zoned R1, so single family residential, the request is to CM1 commercial mixed use. And again, the request is based on desire, the applicant, Twees is looking to relocate to this location, as you know, they're, as you come into Bisbee, but they're looking to move their restaurant to this new location, so that would necessitate this rezoning. It's, the general plan of the nation is commercial mixed use, so the request would certainly be compatible with the existing use in that area, so the old Bisbee planning area. And let me go through, so as far as the, there's a criteria that staff uses to evaluate these requests for rezoning, so again, I have gone through that list and looked at everything from site development standards, looking at parking, the structure's about 732 square feet, so based on the proposed use, it would require about 3.6 parking spaces. Most of you are familiar that, most of that parking would be found along Tombstone Canyon, if you have the photos, I'll show you that, so, but in looking at the other criteria, compatible with existing development, I won't go through each one of these, but I'll just point out that as far as evaluation, there's no conflicts here, clearly the use is compatible with the other commercial mixed use in the area, so we did not find any, anything that was counter to the uses that are there now. As far as public input, I didn't notify, within 300 feet, there were 26 property owners that were notified, and to date, I have not received emails, written correspondence, or even phone calls, I have not heard any objections to this request for the rezoning. So again, did post the property, of course, leaving notice was placed in the newspapers as required. And again, in looking at the general plan, so this falls within the old Bisbee planning area, and certainly there are policies and goals that are being, talks about maintaining that retail core within the activity center, restaurants live, and so clearly this is adding another use that is complementary to what is already there. And again, looking at the planning area, talks about really encouraging mixed uses to go in there, so again, this is certainly complementing the uses that are there. So what I've done now is, in yellow, you can see the subject parcel, so I was trying to illustrate, most of the existing CM1 lies adjacent to this subject parcel, and we're on the north side of Tombstone Canyon. Across the street, you'll have C2, we've got the county, St. Patrick's, you've got the county offices, that's all C2, and then we have Contessos, as well as Screaming Banshees across the street, so it's C1, so clearly there is proliferation of lots of commercial in the area, so it totally makes sense. Everything that's not, is clearly all R1 zoning, so again, this adding, adding that existing parcel to the C1 is certainly consistently compatible with the area there. Here is an aerial photo which identifies the structure that's being proposed for the rezoning. Clearly, there is parking along Tombstone Canyon, that's pretty indicative of what's going on in that area, so there would be street parking, again, here's the High Desert Cafe, Market, and then I photographed Screaming Banshees and Contessos across the street, so again, similar uses, and they all are very compatible with the existing area. And here, I am noting, just, look at that picture, sorry. So the subject parcel here, there's a parcel, and there is a slight buffer here, vacant locker that separates this from the existing residence back here. So no conflicts there. And then again, for those that haven't been inside, it's clearly, the structure has been set up in the past, most recently it's a bakery, so clearly the interior's set up, commercial sink, commercial refrigerator, this area would be additional seating area, because it's clearly disturbing, it's a bedroom, and of course, the outside seating area. But in summary and conclusion, like I said, the PMZ did make a recommendation, it was unanimous for the rezoning of this. Factors in favor, they would support the commercial mixed area of the existing neighborhood, the planning area, goals and policies are fulfilled, and the structure has been previously occupied as a restaurant and also a bakery. So, the recommendation is for a conditional rezoning. We do have two, two conditions, the applicant should apply the city with the signed acceptance of conditions and waiver of claims form, and they would do that within thirty days of admitting city council action, and then the applicant would be required to submit a site plan or building permit application, should they propose to expand the use fee on the current footprint of the building. So, with that, the favorable recommendation is being forwarded, and I can certainly entertain any questions, of the council.
Council, do we have any questions, Mr. Sparsa? Thank you for your usual, very thorough and well-done presentations.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I would open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this zoning change? Again, anyone wishing to speak in favor of this zoning change? Hearing none. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to this zoning change? Again, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition of this zoning change? Hearing none. Ms. Williams, have we received any written correspondence, verbal, telephone, email, or home express?
No, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, I will close the public hearing. Council, entertain the motion. I move to approve the notice that we sent through O-18-14 to conditionally rezone APN 103-61-348 owned by Douglas and Donat Gatten from R1 CM1. Thank you. Do we have any seconds?
A second.
Thank you, we have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Williams?
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominos?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. We have a, Mr. Smith, city manager, this report?
Not this evening, mayor, but I have put something in the paper and distributed it to council and posted it on the city website.
Right, it is on the city website. And Councilman Lindstrom, your comments, sir?
That's, I haven't written any comments, it's very hard to put comments on this agenda, so, just, I would recognize the Pizza House, they just had new ownership recently, and it's really nice now, so if you have a chance, we now have three pizza places in Ward Three, with excellent pizzas, Pizza Rama, Pizza House, and Old Pepper's House, I think we have one. They're all, they're all excellent, so if you guys have a chance, support them.
Thank you, sir. Unless I'm wrong, it's also the only salad bar in Bisbee. You would be wrong about that. I wouldn't be right.
No, wrong. Ecoasis. Ecoasis.
Oh, I would see that. Certainly have the first time meeting tonight. So, with that, do we have a motion? I move to approve. And we have a second. All those in favor of, if you're, if I say them, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye. We stand at here.